United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. So we're on to item two, we're gonna ask for any additions or additions to the agenda.
We have one deletion if you will, under new business, under five, approved policy C H D. You see that same thing on six, so we just wanna delete new business number five.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve agenda as amended.
May I have your assistance?
One second. Any questions or comments on that, we're deleting item five under action items, just because it's a duplicate. All those in favor of approving the agenda with authorization and additional bills, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Four, good things happening. We combined the deletion. Alright, so item four, good things happening. We have the winning for teaching today leading tomorrow.
And we do have one additional thing, Mr. Lake, you wanna talk about?
Sure. Just quickly, I got this just in the mail. The Wyoming High School Activities Association sends out letters of all wear of good sportsmanship throughout the seasons. And this last season, Maggie Hicks got a good sportsmanship award from them during the Glen Rock game. And so, that's a really good thing, we really like our sportsmanship.
Alright, on to the agenda.
Yep, so you have a Peak High School graduation, Mr. Seven, you wanna come on up?
Yes. So, two superintendent members of the board like to introduce Sam Mastin. Sam's been working incredibly hard to get to this point, he's worked with Mrs. Siz, Mrs. Leathers, Mrs. Suko, trying to get everything double-checked, checked again, get his hours, work hours in, get all his courses completed, and he has done that. And so tonight, it's my privilege to present to him for your approval for graduation. He has met the requirements set forth by the board, and we just wanna congratulate you on your graduation tonight. Do you wanna go ahead and move your tassel over?
Congrats, man.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Okay, item C, we have a donation by Twisty Freds. If I have that right, they were distributing tassels gloves and scarves and they were distributed throughout the school. West Elementary had a coat donation from the Knights of Columbus, we're thankful for that as well. We got any other correspondence? Do you have visitor comments?
Sorry, I didn't know if I was supposed to do this as a visitor comment or just add it to the agenda, but in my partner's not here, she didn't get called into work. But I'm Candace Tager and I am the mother of a freshman girl this year at Maple High School who plays athletics. And I wanted to get the board's advice and maybe some solutions to some concerns that I have in regards to away game meals. We calculated for volleyball season, our daughter played on the C team, and we calculated that she spent a total of, can I have it? Let's see here. Just on a credit card, this is not cash, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars on meals for away games. Which is fine for us, however, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars of that was her helping teammates out. So, we brought this attention to the athletic director and didn't get very far, and we also brought it to the attention of the finance office, didn't get it very far as well. Finding a solution to help players or athletes or anybody, any student who's in any activity, funding for these away game meals. Because we didn't think it was fair to come out of parent pockets, and we were also told that sometimes coaches pay for these meals for these kids, but they don't get reimbursed for that as well. I do know that in the policy handbook that meals are paid for if there is an overnight stay, which is perfectly fine, but some of these games are pretty far, they're Rollins, Newcastle, Buffalo. So sometimes they're even more than just one stop, sometimes they'll stop at a gas station and get some snacks and then they, you know, or they'll have breakfast in the morning, so they'll stop at McDonald's and then they'll stop for dinner at the end of the game. So that's, that's two or three times that they stop for food. And I do know just personally, there were two specific girls on the C team that, okay, that do not have access to funds, period, because of, due to a home life situation. So I didn't know if there is a solution that maybe we can come up with as a district to maybe start a funding for this situation. So, that's just, I just wanna bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, super.
We will make sure that somebody gets back with you.
Thank you.
Alright, on the agenda, we're on the consent agenda, item seven.
And I'm sure I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Alright, any questions or comments? All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Onto information items, starting with the superintendent's report.
We weren't sure how much time we're gonna have during the work session, so we might just do a quick summary. I'll have Mr. Lake talk a little bit about that for people that maybe didn't, won't listen to the work session or might watch this online. So maybe just a quick summary of kind of the reasons why we're looking at this possibility.
So just in summary, the first thing is just the idea that to promote the students, promote our whole, our whole community at large, using that video or I just call it video board, giant TV. It, it would be a way to promote all aspects of our community. The other one that, I hadn't heard the STEM, but I had heard the kids doing the video work, and I like that idea a lot. Anytime we get a chance to, to get kids doing stuff in our community, for our community, with our community, I think that's a great, a great idea. I think that might carry the most weight in my mind. Beyond the idea that potentially businesses could advertise within, within our school for people that are at our expense. That's kind of the broad strokes.
Okay. And then the financial part, Shane Wilson, do you wanna go through your? He can sit there if he wants to, we just gotta be sure Ryan clicks on yours so he can see it.
Maybe Steve, you can make it.
Hang on, I gotta put my glasses on so I can see.
Okay, so, thank you members, tonight we were asked if we would print, present a little bit on recalibration and what cash reserves look like as far for the district. So, recalibration has been three times so far this year. This is just a small summary of the, of the items that may impact the foundation guarantee that the school district is looking at. However, tonight's discussion, we're gonna focus more on the bolded items that deal more with cash reserves and carryover. So, keep in mind that this is just a draft bill, there's still gonna be changes with legislation, but currently the way that they are presenting the draft bill is they are going to limit the cash reserves to twenty percent of each school district's foundation guarantee beginning June thirtieth of 2028. They would like to eliminate the pre nineteen ninety-seven cash reserves that the school district currently utilizes and prohibit transfer expenditures of school foundation fund for capital construction on major renovations and projects. So, we'll kind of go through, next slide please.
Could I ask a question before you move on?
Yes.
About that instead eliminate co-located schools, what is that?
So, the elimination of co-located schools is currently, schools are grandfathered into the way that they were originated. So, if we have like Glendo Elementary, Glendo Middle School, Glendo High School, they would eliminate those because they are co-located and make it just Glendo K twelve. So you would no longer be funded as a K six school, a seven, eight school, and a nine twelve. It would move to a K twelve, is what they're currently looking at.
So that would decrease the funding quite a bit. Like in a elementary school, you get half of a assistant principal, that's what you'd get funding wise, and you get another half for the junior high and another half for the high school. So you get one and a half principals, which you kind of roll into the overall needs of the facility or the schools. So it's gonna be a decrease, that's the reason they're doing it.
Okay.
We wanna do it.
Okay. Okay, moving on to page two, so what can we carry over into twenty-six, twenty-seven? So if you take thirty percent of our twenty-twenty-six guarantee minus our charter school portion, because we don't get to calculate them into our cash reserve, we can carry over a total of five point five million dollars. Currently, what we have budgeted at the beginning of this year for our cash carryover is four point six million dollars. Now, I want you just to keep in mind, we have not received our audited cash balance yet, which includes prepaid, accruals, liabilities, and stuff like that. So, we're still waiting on our actual cash balance that would have began our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is just kind of giving you guys a guide of where we're bumping up against that thirty percent. Okay? Go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So, ADM and why it matters. Every, I think there's only two school districts across the entire state that have increasing ADM. Unfortunately, Platte County School District number one is not one of those. So, looking at where we were funded for ADM in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and what we currently have enrolled in twenty-five, twenty-six, you can see that our ADM is dropping. So, what does that mean for Platte one? Less students equals less guaranteed, which equals less money the district can carry over at the end of the year. So this is why we're kind of bringing it to your guys' attention, with our ADM of our students dropping, it's also making our cash carrier have to drop as well. Okay?
So Jamie, good example, if we, wherever we're at and we lose another hundred students, that amount's gonna be over what we can actually maintain, right?
Correct.
If that's the case, does that go back to the state?
Yeah, any money that the school district does not utilize that goes over their thirty percent threshold, we would have to send back to the state. So it's kind of like a spend it if you have it, so you don't lose it, but then finding that perfect niche of where you wanna be as a school district.
And then the ten percent decrease with the proposed bill?
Yeah, correct, so if, looking forward to twenty-twenty-eight, that's also gonna make the cash carryover. We're gonna have to decrease the amount that we can carry over.
Cause it's currently sitting at thirty percent, so they're gonna change it to twenty, for those who don't know.
Correct. Okay, so moving on to the next slide. So this is just the general fund, not including the charter school. Our year-to-date expenditure amounts, so you can see July and August, limited or small expenses, school year hasn't kicked off. September, October, we're starting to gain momentum. November, this is just year-to-date, we do not, we have not paid our additional bills yet for November, so that's not a final number, that number will change. And then what do we have encumbered, and then what do we have remaining? Now, just a reminder, what is encumbered, that's gonna be your salaries and your benefits for your staff that you already have hired. What is your budgeted for that you have remaining? We don't know what the utilities are gonna cost, so those are not encumbered. We do not know copiers, travel for basketball, track is coming, there's a lot of activities still left for repairs and maintenance that we would pay for out of our general fund and our supplies and such. Also, if you were to have a need that we talked about with special education, that could come out of there as well, but still, a hefty amount remaining for the school district in order to utilize for the year. Continuing on down, broken out into percentages rather than numbers, some people like to see how much we have remaining. Twenty-four percent of our budget is unspoken for, however, budgeted for. Okay?
So Jamie, looking at that slide, I know I'm probably missing something. But if we're, it's costing us almost eight percent a month, we have twenty-four percent left. By my quick calculations, we'll be out of money before the end of February.
No, not, no.
And I know, I know that's not how that works. Don't, don't take it that I'm saying that, but just looking at that, it doesn't look good.
Right, but also you have to keep in mind that the encumbered piece is the most expensive piece, and that's your salaries. So without your, so that's, your eight percent is including your salary and your payroll, which you're, so I did.
So those two pie pieces keep reducing as your months roll around?
Correct, so then your, December's gonna come out of the green slice, if you will, very minimal will come out of the blue.
Yeah, cause my next question was gonna be, okay, what's costing us one point five million dollars a month to operate?
Well, it's in August, we're only two, cause you don't have that.
I'm sorry.
Is that why July are only two, July and August, because you don't have that?
Right.
Yep, starting in September.
No, I get that, yeah, I was just connecting back, so.
No, I'm glad you asked, because that would, that is not the point, the point is not to panic, we're, we're doing good.
Well, I definitely wouldn't be panicking here, I just like, I gotta, I gotta understand the chart.
Alright, go ahead and scroll up. So in conclusion, Platte County School District is doing very good, in a good financial standing. We have nothing to panic about, our cash reserves are something that we need to closely monitor throughout the year. What does that look like, what is our ADM looking like? How close are we getting to maxing out into that thirty percent with our ADM dropping, is the point of this discussion.
Thank you.
You bet. What boggles my mind about that is the state's gonna, wants to take ten percent of us being able to save our own money and do what as we see fit. And I, I don't understand why they wouldn't want us to keep our money instead of going to them with our hands up, that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
You bet.
Excuse me?
Oh, thank you. I thought it was glorious.
I wouldn't predict anything, so the pre ninety-seven money, so tell us a little bit more about that, like that.
So, pre ninety-
We're close to a million dollars, correct, in our district?
Look, correct, correct. So, pre ninety-seven money currently does not count, you get to basically keep that as your cash, but they don't count that towards your thirty percent. So, right now we have a very healthy pre ninety-seven money, so we have a million dollars that we don't have to count towards our cash reserve, essentially. But, they're wanting to eliminate that as part of the calculation, so it's kind of going to be quote-unquote a double hit. You're gonna reduce the amount of cash that we can carry over, and you're going to take away our pre ninety. We can still spend our pre ninety-seven money, I don't wanna make that part unclear, but it does not get to count as part of your thirty percent. Take away from part of your thirty percent.
As it has.
Correct, in years past. Now, granted, again, this is all draft bill, it could change, but I just kind of wanted to keep you guys in the loop and give you a heads up of what we're kind of looking at as the year progresses.
What danger do you have to have that spend down?
It's a twenty-seven, even twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
You're talking the cash reserve or are you talking like overall in general?
Cash reserves each year.
It happens by June thirtieth, that's the snapshot date that they take into place. But the frustrating or hard part is, is you don't get, they go off of your audited cash balance, and we don't receive our audit that takes into consideration all this until December. So, it's a lot of, this is what I think we're sitting at, and then how's the auditor going to make those adjustments as well.
And Jamie, your calculations, was it close to thirty, was it like twenty-nine percent is what you calculated before?
Correct, we're, yep.
So when we're bumping up as close as we could?
And we're bumping up very close.
And I think when we put money into depreciation accounts, because we knew we didn't wanna have extra and have to pay back, and that's why that five hundred thousand was put into the depreciation.
Correct.
Our best guess, in June, June thirtieth, actually.
Did you already say, and I missed, what we have in the pre ninety-seven account?
It's like nine hundred and eighty-one thousand.
So basically, there'd be two years we'd have to spend that, if our-
If that's what they continue with legislation, we would need to spend that.
Right. Correct. Or some event.
They hope you can, they hope, we gotta hope they give you two years, magically they could say.
Right, and I think that that's the frustrating thing, is like, that's where a lot of, your biggest expense is your three, three-month payroll that comes out in May, and it's like, now we only have thirty days to kind of see where we're gonna be at with cash, and then you have to make sure that your vendor is going to also deliver it, so then you can pay for it as well. That's another issue that we've ran into over the last couple of years, we've had it ordered, didn't come in time, so now, we don't get to count that as spent. So, it's, it's fun game.
But the good news, we're in good shape.
Yes.
We just gotta be aware that there's gonna be some reduction of what we can carry over, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, I'm just going for headline.
Yes, we're just gonna, we're supposed to talk a little bit about kind of their focus area, so Shane and Tom, you guys wanna come up with the first and listen. You guys have heard a little bit about their accountability, that kind of rolls into their school improvement, I think it's important just to hear like, what's their main focus area to improve? The graduation.
So last year when we did these, Mr. Wadsworth came in with the PLC model stuff, and we were trying to make that a focus. So, when we wrote these, we wrote them for Glendo and for West, we wrote every, all of our goals based around the PLC model. Now that we have that, it's pretty ingrained, I wanted to break it up differently. I told Shane I'd talk about Glendo first, and then we can talk about Vivian West. So what I did this year, I just met with the staff, and there's a list of, I don't know, what, twenty-five-ish things that you can choose from, and they went through this list and decided that the, the two main things they wanted to focus on in Glendo was learning support and data-informed planning. And what you do, when you fill this, there's a sheet, they'll help and say, these are where we're struggling the most, and then you can focus on that in your plan. And as a team, we decided that those two are the ones that, that we're struggling with most out there, so they're looking at, the first one is a scheduled time during the school day that uses PLCs, MTSS, those processes, to look at student data and intervention times and things like that. It's a different, it's different out there than it is in here because of the makeups of this school. So it's harder to get your K one, your four, your seven, your high school teacher all together at the same time, because those kids are moving around all the time. So they're working on trying to figure out a way to schedule some time where they can all meet, and right now, that's over their lunch. So all the kids can go in and eat lunch, and then they have about a half hour where they can sit and talk about this stuff. So it's brand new, I mean, we just wrote this about a month ago. So it's a new system, and they're looking at their schedules and stuff like that. So that's the first one that they wanted to talk about. And then the other one was, on top of that, work on their data analysis, just how they're looking at data and how they're using that to, you know, lead their teaching practices and, and talking to each other and saying, well, you're doing this and you're doing well, how can I do better at this grade level to help you? So, those are the two main things that we're looking at in Glendo. Questions about those two, and they mix together really well, so I like that.
So Fridays are wide open because we're on a four-day schedule, how does that, could that be factored into them meeting to do things? Is that a-
We might have had that talk today.
Because I'm just thinking of that, I mean, you got a full day of time, so I mean, that's, yeah, go ahead, I don't know.
My only negative part about that is right now, when we built that four-day schedule and we built it and we added a half an hour, thirty-five minutes to their day, to make, to make sure that they met the, the time requirements for the state.
Gotcha.
So we'd have to look at that to just make sure it's fair throughout the district. We do have, you want me to talk about that?
Yeah.
We're finishing our second year for the alternate schedule out there, so that means we'd have to reapply to get another alternative schedule out there for the four-day. So I'm gonna, this week hopefully, get a survey written up and sent out to all the staff and all the parents out there to see if they want to continue to look at the four-day, or to kind of look at what we're doing in town and go back to a schedule like that.
Or it could be something different, cause like you were saying-
Or it could be a hybrid, yeah.
Like, Tom was saying like, it's hard to get out there when he's the principal, and we said, well, you could always write, do an alternative calendar and have other things happen on Fridays, just like you were saying. For students only, students and staff, or whatever you wanna do, you could do an alternative calendar different than what they currently write. And hopefully that could be based on some feedback he gets through his, you know, his surveys. And I think it would be very valuable for staff to be able to have the time to meet, without just doing the lunch, cause a lot of times lunch and you're not really focused on.
Pretty sure that's Patty's number one.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll throw it out there then too, if we all went to a four-day week and we had a full Friday, then we could collaborate as a district as a whole, instead of just doing things separately here, there, and wherever. Just, I'm just saying, I mean, I know that was brought up before, it was shot down, but we've done it two years now in Glendo. Would, what would be the harm in looking at doing it district-wide? Or going back to five-day weeks so that we're all districtly on the same page and can work together as a district whole?
I can build any type of calendar you would like to see.
I've had a lot of people ask when that conversation's gonna come up, because it was had in the past about we went on a four-day, I'm not saying one way or the other, like, I'm just-
I know, I'm just, and I'm just throwing it out there as far as cooperation amongst the, the teachers in our district.
To stay on, on tests, sorry, but that is a conversation we probably need to have, but we're gonna do it another day.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Tom.
I've been calendars for a long time in this history, so I can work on that. So, actually, this probably sounds bad, I didn't even look at your school improvement plan. So, I'm assuming that it's pretty much the same as mine, as we normally do. So, same thing, last year at West, we did the PLC plans and made sure we had those things in place. And this year when we met, the main things that, that my leadership team wanted to work on was data-informed planning. So both of ours, both of our goals are focused around data-informed planning, making sure that we have systems in place to collect and report student assessments, whether they're weekly assessment or a unit assessment. whether they're, uh, weekly assessment or a unit assessment or our common formatives or YTOP and VASCRIDGE, just a way that we are, uh, collecting those, looking through that data and figuring out where we need to go. Um, whether that's interventions, enrichments, wherever it is. Um, the other one is just making sure that we're using our results when we're talking about data to actually inform what we're teaching. So those are the two that we're doing at West. And then piggybacking off of that, so we use, you know, we, we fall under all the data, the state data that is third to fifth rated for West. And so we, we work together a lot and collaborate very well there. So really just in layman's terms maybe, so what we're looking for is growth through collaboration this year. Is the main thing, what we focus on is our individual skills, how we acquire them based on the curriculum construction that we're getting. Now we look at how the kids are going to work through that. Basically about every three weeks or so.
That's the same thing I said, but at kindergarten, first grade level.
Layman's, that's right. No acronym.
Sorry. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, you wanna go?
Sure. So we'll talk about the middle school first, uh, so the one area that the middle school was below target in, uh, we were partially meeting uh, expectations, and one area we were not meeting expectations was in achievement. And that's basically the, the state's looking at how are we performing on YTOP, uh, for grades six, seven and eight, so we've been meeting and discussing, you know, strategies to, to focus on how we get, you know, how do we increase that achievement, that one, you know, that kinda that one day snapshot of how our kids are performing. And so some of the things we've done so far, um, our first meeting, we decided we were gonna push back any, any YTOP interim or math testing in the fall uh, to give our teachers just a chance to, to teach to our curriculum, which of course is matched the standards. And just have that uninterrupted time until we get to the winter. Um, we felt that we still wanted to give these kids a chance to, to see and experience, you know, the tool that they use to test, but to, you know, they've been, they've been doing this for a number of years to back off on the number of testing days that we have allowed to that teacher instruction. Uh, so we're also working through the PLC process, um, teachers are looking and talking about data based on our common assessments uh, that we have built into our curriculum. And then, so hopefully, you know, we're gonna start doing some math testing in December um, to get our, our first kind of baseline. Uh, and then we'll do YTOP interims, which is basically a practice test for the summer test in, in the spring. We'll do that, but other than that, our growth, uh, we were meeting target and growth and equity. Um, so really in a good spot, if we can get that achievement to bump up, we're about nine percentage points away from meeting target there, so if we can get to that spot and keep everything else where it is, we should be, should be meeting target. Uh, as far as Peak High School, um, achievement, again, we're, we're looking at uh, freshmen and sophomores taking the YTOP. Uh, we did not have a reported score there because our numbers of freshmen and sophomores are so low. Um, growth, however, we were meeting target, um, and then equity, uh, we did not have enough numbers there to get a reported score as well as English learners. Um, we were meeting target for the school climate. Uh, alternative schools are required in the fall and in the spring to take a climate survey. And so, and in fact, that grew from, uh, two point four two to two point eight eight. Um, so that was a nice little growth there on the climate score. And then basically what we've done is we've, we've set the next, our growth expectation to be that next target level. So for instance, uh, in growth, we were meeting target at forty-eight, the next cut score is at fifty. So we're really close to, uh, exceeding expectations there, school climate was at two point eight eight, the next cut score is three point three. So just trying to increase to that next level is our goal. Where we're not meeting target, uh, is graduation rates. It continues to be a target area for, for Peak High School and then also, uh, credits earned, so the state monitors uh, if students are making one quarter of their credits each year. So if you're not meeting those targets, you're probably not gonna meet the graduation rate, so those two are really tied together, so we're working on those. Um, as you know, a continued, continued effort to increase graduation rates at Peak High School. One area, again, that I'm, you've heard me talk about this before, uh, with Wheaton High School, but also Peak High School that I'm super proud of, we actually were exceeding target with our post-secondary readiness. So our kids are, are meeting those targets, uh, they're, you know, we have kids that are in CTE programs that are meeting that, they're meeting scores on the ASVAB. Um, so, uh, that is a good thing to know is that our kids, when they, when they graduate, they are ready. And so he saw, you know, he saw Sam tonight, he's been working hard, um, and this has proved that our kids are ready for whatever they choose to do after Peak High School. So again, our focus is on graduation rates and then we do have a couple smaller targeted groups, uh, that we're focused on within that. Questions?
Thanks, Josh. Why did you say?
No.
Please.
They are, but they're not telling why.
That's all right, okay. So one of the things that is an interesting place I've never been in, uh, before is I've never came into and followed a school that was meeting expectations in every category. So that's a good place to be, right? So instead of saying we're gonna have to do this, this, this and this, have our problem, blah, blah, we're moving forward, now I have to come up with a different idea. What are we gonna keep growing? So you go back to the high impact areas and the, the impact area that, uh, Mr. Sandman had settled on last year that we're gonna continue growing in is ninth grade credit. That transition here from eighth to ninth grade will always be an issue. Uh, it's, it's just inherent in our system, not just our system, but the whole system, eighth to ninth grade is always difficult. And so we're in credit, uh, means, uh, focusing on the ninth graders, their schedule, their work, their, the teachers doing great work with them, their relationship building, et cetera, et cetera. And that's where our PLC focus is, is working with the kids um, and driving into those great strategies where they're engaged, they're, they're interested and they wanna be here. They don't want to fail a class. One of the big, uh, data points across the country is if a ninth grader gets behind in their credit, they get exponentially more likely to drop out. And so that's a, a perfect area to focus on. Uh, there is, you've probably heard last year that the, the academy, the eighth grade, incoming eighth grade academy type of scenario where the, the eighth graders come up in the spring, they spend some time at the high school, uh, being asked what around, being teachers, talking to the instructors they're gonna have, giving their schedule, et cetera, et cetera. We're gonna try to do a five, or I haven't talked to Mr. Sandman about this yet though, so it's first he's hearing about it too, but try to get up there four or five times instead of one or two times. So they get a little more comfort level, get just a little more idea what it's gonna look like and then move into, uh, their high school experience. That's, that's in the support. Technically the F three, uh, domain. That's kinda what we're gonna focus on.
So Troy, by increasing the credits, could I see that in here? Is that to add that cushion level so that should something happen with one of their classes? They're not as far behind or how does that factor into that?
Two lenses, the first one, what you said, yeah, gives them a little cushion, but ultimately it's probably, uh, in my mind, more important their, their self-perceived, well, you know, high school goals of their, of themselves. I failed two classes, I can't do this. Suddenly I, I get this spiraling down fall, if you will, and then they so, you know, then by the time they're a sophomore, junior, they're looking at an extra year, an extra semester. They're not doing it. It, it seems typical that as they hit the end of their junior year, they can't seem right at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. And as I, you've gotta make up, you know, four credits. It, it becomes a little harder sell to keep those eighteen, nineteen year olds in, in high school.
Okay, any first words? Yeah, this is so much real quick. Um, so, so part of our strategic plan talks about meeting or exceeding with our accountability score, so all their school improvement plans are geared towards that, right? So meeting, our whole thing would be every school in the district is meeting or exceeding expectations with the achievement, with the growth, with the equity, those, those components, so we feel like and we know through research, the professional learning community is the way to get there. So that's why each person, even at a little different, when you don't have like four teachers that are teaching saying great, it's a little more difficult. Like at Troy's level, even at Josh's, they're talking about maybe some common planning by content areas, focusing on some literacy things across every classroom, so we're, we're continuing that focus 'cause that is the research behind it, so. Hopefully, we, this is our second year starting kind of the focus, so we're hoping by the end of, start next year, we see some of those results, so.
All right, we go on to, um, item two, under information, we've got the October perks and recommends in our packet that um, you can hit the hyperlink and look at that, any questions or comments about that? If not, we'll go on to item B for information, this is through the policy evaluation. The policy committee met last Monday. And these are some that we, um, bring forth to you guys to repeal. Whether they were, um, some of them were repeats, um, just trying to clean it up a little bit, so instead of reading every one of them, are there questions or comments and Mr. Wiggler? I'm sure we'd be happy to answer questions as well, Juan.
My question is, we're gonna revise some of these later on.
So an example would be if you look at the first two, so the board review regulations, we're going, those two are the same, but the one that's moving forward actually combines it, right? So it's like, it's different 'cause our group said, well, why don't we just have this one and, and actually combine these other two, so we can get rid of two and have one policy. So sometimes they're duplicate and they have different codes like CHB and BFCA. There's really no need to have duplicates, right? 'Cause you have one policy that's the same.
That's not my question, my question is, if we repeal them, then we don't have anything. 'Cause the next one requires two readings, so we're, some of these were void, like the computer use doesn't exist until our second reading if we repeal these.
Yeah.
Do you see what I'm saying?
So, so it's just, this first one's informational, then the next time it's repealed. So like with Ryan's policies, you're doing first reading, so on second reading, they're gonna replace the repeal.
Okay, I read this as we were gonna repeal all these tonight and.
Okay.
No, so repeal means we've kinda, we put all these, we're doing a lot of policies, right? So we put them all informational, say, these are the ones we're gonna look at. Now we know some of them are gonna be repealed, so we put those information, so you can see them and look at them, and then the following month is where we're gonna actually
Right.
send them down the road.
And so this is not an action, this is an informational.
Yeah, yeah.
For now.
But it is because repealing is removing in, in existing, so it is a little deceptive to look at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But for information, not action, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So now we're onto board reports, I don't think any of our committees has met. Um, I know we're gonna have a, a little brief meeting with the food committee when we're up in Casper with, um, Mrs. Wilson and some people from other districts, but so the safety committee and the food committee is still going forward. Any other committee reports or comments on that? Okay, all right, well, on the action items, seeing no old business, we'll start with our new business with item one.
With motion to approve the personnel hiring, resignation, termination.
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions or concerns? All those in favor to approve the personnel hiring, resignation and termination, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? And item two, resolutions.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the WSBA resolutions.
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the WSBA resolutions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No? Item three.
Don't smoke.
Keep track. Keep myself organized here.
What did I?
I gotta point at one second, look at the elements.
I'll make a motion to approve policy IIBG, employee acceptable use of technology on first of two readings.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a question, how many, do we keep track of how many employees actually take these items home? I think it's policy that says they can take them home.
I'm gonna ask Ryan, Ryan, you wanna answer that?
So we do have an asset, uh, tracking system that we check, we check everything out that, um, each staff member should have and then it's kinda up to them on.
If they take it, who we're on.
Okay, but we do keep track of it.
Okay. Does it track to the IP address?
Uh, no, we don't go that quick, we just basically go on serial numbers, asset tags, so, um, we try not to be that
In-depth.
Yeah, in-depth.
Intrusive.
Brian's in his office, where are they?
Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, all those in favor to approve policy IIBG, employee acceptable use of technology on the first of two readings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No? Okay, number four.
Madam Chair, I'm going to approve policy JP, student acceptable use of technology, internet safety and for. I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor to approve policy JP, student acceptable use of technology and internet sa- safety on the first of two readings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Item five.
So what would be?
Oh, sorry, yeah, deleted, I forgot to mark this page, sorry, so item five was deleted. We're on to item six.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would move to approve the following policies for revision, first of two readings. Policy CH, policy implementation, policy CHA, development of regulations, policy CHC, regulation dissemination, policy CHCA, approval of handbooks and directives, policy CHD, administration and policy absence.
I'll second that.
On CHCA, can I try to find it if I scroll down?
The handbooks and
Yeah.
directives, yep.
I actually, I think it's paragraph three. I think sentences one and two should probably be switched, I think it talks about, um, the superintendent and then the school board. And I'm trying to find it.
I, I got it right here, it says all handbooks will be submitted for the board approval prior to publication. The superintendent shall review and approve handbooks before they are submitted to the board.
It probably should be switched where the superintendent approves it before it's submitted to the board for our approval.
To what?
That is literally
No, I just.
Literally flip flopping.
Let the sentence, the sentences are in the wrong order.
John brings it to us, then we proceed.
Then we approve it. And then. And then just for a stupid question. How often do we do this?
Each year.
Each year?
I don't know if we did previously, but I think since I've been here, we've always tried to have those ready to go before the school year started. And we did have that claims on that policy committee and, you know, it could be published some of the time, but we wanted to do it to start the year, if there's any changes, we publish that out. Thank you, yep.
So I guess my question would be, if you do switch those, do we need to wait to approve CHCA? Then, or can we go ahead and approve it?
I think.
And then the second reading, you just have the changed language in it? Because we're not changing it, we're just changing the placement of it.
Of the sentence.
Okay, sounds good.
The motion is to approve all of these. Sean, would you agree to admit or amend the motion to approve with this?
Mm-hmm, I will amend the motion as previously stated, with the exception of policy CHCA, wherein we will change the order in paragraph three and this second sentence to just switch the order of the language.
Thank you.
No change in the language.
Okay, thank you. All right. The motion is to approve the following policies for revision, first of two readings. Policy CH, policy CHA, policy CHC, policy CHCA with the modification, and policy CHB. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? We are on to item seven. Improvement plans.
I would make a motion to approve the school improvement plans for Irving West Elementary, West Middle, I mean, Wee La Middle School, Weetland High School, Peak High School, and Glendo Schools.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor to approve the school improvement plans? Please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? All right, item eight.
Audio video system.
I make a motion to approve the Weetland High School gym audio and video system.
I'll second.
Okay, we can continue our discussion from the workshop now. Any comments, questions?
So I guess, you know, I did make a motion, but my question about this, and I apologize for not making the the discussion earlier, but with electronics, it seems like they go out of date really quickly. Could this happen?
So Jim did reach out to the vendor and his response was, on average, what he sees is a longevity of ten to fifteen years. And after that, they do recommend upgrading, and it's with anything. I mean, I've had this laptop for five years, still works great for me. But at some point, some software or something is gonna cause me to have to update this. And I foresee that being something similar. But we don't know really what that means, because the LED technology behind it will probably be here for a while. So we don't know if that means we can retrofit or if we would have to completely replace. But I definitely foresee us going probably for the longer side of, we could probably have this for at least fifteen years.
Can you tell about the warranty thing, do we talk about?
So, um, they give us, did it say ten years in your text? Okay, so I did say five, because that's what he told me on the phone, but we have written proof that parts in on this is ten years. Um, there's a one-year warranty, standard warranty of onsite where they send somebody up to replace whatever goes wrong with it. Now, if we do purchase this now, they'll upgrade that to a three-year onsite warranty. So then if there's anything wrong, I don't have to deal with it, Jim doesn't have to deal with it for the first three years. And then after that, they will still give us the parts and then we have to replace it. If it's anything like our current scoreboard thing that Peggy and the Booster Club operate, super simple. We had one bad panel and it took me fifteen minutes to replace. I mean, it was really easy to replace it.
I'm concerned about long-term maintenance.
I I'm personally not.
On this warranty, is there any charges? A lot of warranties, they say they warrant it, but you paid for the travel coming up? Or is it all like, do you know that?
He told me it was all-inclusive. So that three-year was, it's all on their dime, they just come up immediately.
From where?
I think from Colorado, but I'm not, so I'm guessing Denver is where it came out of.
So on your quote here, it does say never Colorado.
It says Denver on here.
Okay, thank you.
So refresh my memory, where did the funding, where does the funding for this come from?
Major maintenance. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's all.
I just, just questioning that, how does that work? Would it be because we're replacing the other scoreboard and going with this as a new one? Because I know with the doors at West, we couldn't use major maintenance for that per se or part of it, because they were never built into the building? So how would this be any different?
Yeah, we're replacing the current system that's in there.
Okay.
So, and that's why we do that.
Can we use the old seventy-nine funds or whatever it was?
Ninety-seven.
No, ninety-seven.
Maybe maybe with that, maybe when that time rolls around, they're gonna, they're gonna great.
That's a long time ago.
So. That that kind of goes off of my, or my question to play off of that. So this is gonna be an unfavorable question, but because it's a blunt one. But so we're bumping up against having too much money in different accounts and whatnot. And we have plans for major maintenance money, five-year plan and whatnot. So I'm gonna go back to our conversation that we had in, I don't remember when, about the bleacher sheets. And we needed to spend some money, because we were up against the end of the fiscal year. And we had some stuff planned out. Boilers and HVACs and major projects that need time to order the products and whatnot. What else do we have coming up that is going to be at Wheatland High School that does not take a major planning process of engineers and shipping and lag time and all of the things? Because we've I'm not saying I'm not on board, but again, I'm gonna reiterate, we've done the bleachers, we've done the floor, we've done the weight room. We've done, and I'm not opposed to that, but we do have the other things. So my question is, what else do we have that doesn't take all of the planning that's gonna pop up in another three months and want to spend some more money? Does that make sense?
At the high school, you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Do you under, I'm not trying to argue, I'm I'm trying to ask an honest question.
Yeah, I can't.
And it's a loaded one.
Honestly, can't think of any other project coming up at the high school in the next three months that would be.
That's not a sewer or a HVAC or sprinklers or.
Something that's gonna cost a hundred fifty K if we drop the money now, what are we gonna do?
Well, not necessarily what are we gonna do, because we've got monies.
Right.
But we're planning all of these things, which I think is fabulous, because it was not that way three years ago. We had no idea. So I I I like the track you're on, but I'm also on the bandwagon of the HVAC and the boilers and the things. But they are on your plan, I understand your process.
Yeah, that.
But coming in every three months and then we're gonna get to June and we're gonna be like, well, we gotta spend some money, but we gotta get it from Europe.
No, honestly, I can't think of anything coming up on my agenda that I can think of over there. Um, to feedback into some of that question a little bit ago about, well, yeah, we do have, you know, teaching, we've got those different things. And one of the things we've got to keep in mind is we really have a three-month window to do these updates, the big ones. And so there's only so many hours in a day. So we can't jump into all the big projects all the time, because it is such a process and we have such a window. So it's kind of prioritizing some of that. I see some of these as it's a great way to update the school district. And this isn't one that takes all that time. This is something that's, and they can come throw it in a weekend, we've updated something. And it doesn't hinder our long-term plan of all the big, big things. So I guess, answer your question, I don't see anything really coming up in the high school in the next few months.
I mean, if you want to drop a hundred thousand dollars on another school, we can talk about that, but in three months, but like, do you know what I'm saying? Like it's I'm glad that it looks great. I I'm on board for them all to look great, but I'm on board for the long-term projects, so.
So when you boil it all down, we're not gonna take anything from any other major maintenance projects that we're doing. When we boil it down to the bare minimum.
Yeah, if you remember, I think we're at two point one million dollars in major maintenance funds. Where where our projects aren't moving fast enough and we keep getting these payments, we keep growing. We need to start utilizing those and we have a good plan in place now from Libby's HVAC, from Glendo. Glendo's HVAC plus, we're looking at some alternatives, maybe as a building with a security festival, maybe that breezeway going to the gym and kind of maybe reduce some of that the building that's not really gonna be able to be fixed very easily, and we don't use it very much. So I think we have plans throughout the district. The high school has been kind of like, hey, yeah, we, the weight room came from from grant money, right? Those are tester funds that have nothing to do with any other other funding. So we take that one kind of loss, it was for wellness and we did use it for student and staff wellness. Our staff does enjoy that, so I think that was a good move. Um, I think kids really like that, I think our staff really like use that also, so that was a good move. So if you take that one off, really, at the high school, it was done, out of tornados before I started. And then the gym, that needed a little bit of tender care, I think.
I really appreciate the fact that they're looking at how the students can learn. Depends on, um, things to take with them, how they can work with the geography and how they can do that kind of study.
I think that's just, I agree, that's one of the biggest pieces, is that there's a lot working toward getting from students in, let's say, blue collar worker, there's a lot of focus right now on that. Great, we know we need that, but we also need other, you know.
Who said it was a safety thing, too? Was that you, Frank?
Yeah, so it's one of those things where, um, and we could actually integrate it into our PA system as well. It's basically, what you end up doing is using almost like a video ducking system, so. And a lot of people don't know what a video ducking system is. It's kind of like, when you're listening to an announcement, we have audio duckers that will, let's say the weight room plays music, well, it will turn their music off and then the PA can overcome it. So we could do the same thing with the video, where everything's going normal. And if something happened and we trigger it through our audio enhancement system, we can actually kick the video off, display what needs to be displayed up there and and get things moving quickly. Especially if you can't hear the, you know, if you're in a loud crowded gym and you can't hear the PA system, because the PA system's not, it's not anywhere near good enough audio quality as what is needed for that big of a space. So having that visual cue of, hey, there's a problem or there's an announcement we need to listen would be just one of those big security pieces for it.
This is also gonna be an update to the audio system, too, right?
Yes.
Trying to get this straight.
Yeah, just not the PA system. But it's, yeah.
All right, any further questions or comments? It is a motion for both of them. Could technically take a separate amount if we wanted to, if we wanted to, but the motion is for both of them together. All right, so the motion is, all those in favor to approve the WHS gym audio and video system through Norcon pricing with the new BOSI's contract, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? The motion passes six to one. All right, so the next item is that our school board meeting for December will be at eight, it's early this month. Um, in December, as it usually is because of the holiday season. Right now, I don't know if anybody has anything about the work session? I don't think they have anything at the moment.
So I've been talking to a couple of different districts, or at least I've heard of a couple of different districts doing their board evaluations and their superintendent evaluation different than we do. Where they break it down to one thing a month and go through it. That way, everybody's on kind of more of a understanding of how it works and and doing it together, it's more of a real time on the spot. And that's something I'd like to talk about maybe next meeting, I want, at the conference.
Like in the work session?
Yeah, and I'd like to meet with a couple of those districts at the conference and kind of talk to a couple of their board members about how they do it. Because I see a lot of value in.
I don't think you've seen the LNG that we used to do, so we can show you that too.
That'd be great, and I kind of have an idea for a way to do that, where we break it down into seven categories and and do one a month, so that we don't do a cumulative assessment of ourselves or John all at once. We do it once a month on each different part. And I think it'd just be better for all of us as members, too, to do it that way. That way, we kind of keep more of a real time of what's going on and where we're at. I don't know, change it up a little bit.
Let's talk, there's one more conference to come up with.
And I think in December, there, that's when you look at your meeting dates, too. So I don't know if there's some time to discuss that, or we went back and forth, like what day works, what time works? I mean, could that be a second, maybe? Discussion item, if we have the time, so. I know we talked a little bit about it, but I think that's gonna be set that, I believe, as.
It should be someone who said.
So if we had a little time, we could at least say, hey, this room works well, or we need to change it. I don't know.
So we're gonna start recruiting, because we got four people up for election in a year from now, just saying. There'll be one vacancy.
Well, thanks for that, Tim, Ben.
Can we figure out a work session time then?
Want to do it before?
On the same day or?
Yeah, anyone do?
I think so.
I would like it.
Is it working for everyone?
Okay.
At five o'clock?
Five o'clock, okay.
And maybe we could discuss the lunch or the away game costs, your costs, please. On that one, move.
Yeah, okay, we gotta go.
All right, so then our work session will be twelve eight at five P M. The school board meeting will be December eighth at six P M. If nothing further on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to the.
Madam Chair, I'm going to adjourn.
My second that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.